Senator Graham, would you do the roll call, please?
It's on.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Sinclair, Mike Lamani.
Here.
Mike Delavicki.
Here.
David Bowns.
Here.
Cale Denial.
Here.
Jay Tiven.
Here.
Edwin Bonas.
Here.
Elizabeth May.
Here.
And Chair.
Yeah. In addition to those members that are sitting here this evening, we have the Director of Planning, Dean Tefran, and Assistant Director Brian Loughlin. So we'll make note of that. There's gonna be a little change on the agenda in the sequence in which we're gonna have the presentations. We'll go first with the Provincial Road as the first item, and after that, we'll go with the Thomas, 19 Thomas Drive, whatever that is, Morris Drive, the sidewalk, the way over for the sidewalk, and we do have one going on from, I guess those are the two, right, that we're moving forward.
We're gonna do Provincial Road first?
Uh, we're gonna do Provincial Road first, yes.
Yeah.
Do you have application acceptances?
Pardon?
Do you have application acceptances? Application acceptances?
Well, we could do those also. I mean, I thought, I couldn't realize that you wanted, okay, yeah, and we'll do the application acceptancies, and then the last one on basically, for all intents and purposes for the agenda, would be the Gardens project here. Okay, let's, can we, the public hearing is, this public hearing for Provincial Road is a continuation on May 2nd, and as of May 2nd, it came to us last month, and I just wanna get a time on this. So we'll open it up at 6:33. Take note of that. And will the applicant speak?
Yep. John Roke with the Roke Consulting here on behalf of Double D Development. I was here at the last meeting, and basically, there was a question brought up on the road section, and whether it was a correct section that was designed and built, and Luke Powell sent a pretty extensive email to you guys, and I had actually looked it up as soon as I got home, and found that it's exactly according to the design. That's on the city website. It's designed according to standard, it's built according to standard, and Luke Powell has, they, DPW did all the inspections during it. He said they're fine with accepting it as is, as constructed.
Okay. Any citizens that want to talk about this, any input? I'll turn to staff, staff, close the public hearing. Staff, any input on this?
Um, we've got the, you guys should have in your packet a copy of the email sent to us by Luke Powell describing the situation, and saying that the road as constructed was built to specification, and it is acceptable to DPW. There's also additional information about where the sidewalk is located, why it's located there, the drainage, and other concerns that were raised at the last meeting. So at this point, staff from the planning department and DPW are recommending that the planning board recommend the road for acceptance, and send that forward to City Council.
Any comments from the board? We'll entertain a motion at this time for acceptance.
I move, I move that we accept Provincial Road as a city street. That's PL 2017-0024 SU. Provincial Road Proposal to Accept. Provincial Road is a city street.
Second. Second. Any more discussion on the topic? Okay, does everyone vote on it? All in favor? Any opposed? Pass it unanimously. Okay, John?
Thank you very much. That's what I was hoping for last month.
So, John, we'll send that recommendation forward to City Council, and they'll let you know when you're scheduled on that agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Next one we have is the waiver for sidewalk, and that's PL 2017-0024, and, and again, that, let me open that up at 6:36, and, and the applicant, let me speak, I guess.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Brian Bailey to the applicants. This, as you may recall, is a boundary line adjustment between six or seven lots over on Morrison Ave, Thompson Ave, Allen Ave, and the plan was gone over in detail, and the one item that was somewhat outstanding or needed to be resolved was that with regard to the abutting property of Kevin and Rita Sullivan. And as we had all hoped, the Winchells and the Sullivans have in fact come to agreement and have signed off on an easement, and I believe that the city is in receipt of that, and I think that was the last outstanding item. So, to be brief, that's it.
Okay. Staff, do you have any input on that?
So we do have a copy of the easement signed by both parties, both property owners. So at this point, we would recommend approval with the conditions that were included in our staff review. And those conditions would be just one minor plan revision, and then other standard conditions.
So an easement has been agreed upon?
Yep. We've got the page signed by the Winchells here, and page signed by the Sullivans here.
Yes. Can you make us copies?
Sure.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yes. Does the easement allow the deck to overhang? Is that what it does?
It allows the deck to overhang, and then if at any point it's reconstructed, they have to, or the fence is removed, they have to make it, pull it back onto their own property.
Any abutters that want to make comment on this? Okay, I will close the public hearing, and call for a vote on this. I would actually call for someone to accept this, approve it?
Yep.
Okay. Who makes that, who's gonna do that? Any?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Make a motion that we accept PL 2017-0024 SU, the waiver for a sidewalk.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Let me back up. I don't want Luis to call me at home. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay. She's, the protocol here. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, I'll pass it unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Messer Street. Again...
This is application accepted?
Has the application been accepted, and all the...
It is complete and ready for review.
Ready for review.
Is this 183 Messer? This 183 Messer?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, you lost me. I thought we were going up to the top, and we're going, now we're talking about the Messer Street?
We're talking about the Messer Street replaced the 5720 square foot building with the 3,000 square foot building?
Oh, so that's actually two...
No, no, the next one down.
It's on the second page, number two, it's actually 62? Okay.
It's PL 2017-0076? Is that the one?
That's the one.
2017-0071.
71.
71.
So it's number two in the public hearing?
DeTal.
It's in the public hearing, yeah.
Right.
So you need to accept it, and then open the public hearing? That's what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay. So, yes, this application is complete and ready for review, if the board would like to accept it, and then open a public hearing.
Any discussion? Okay. I will put a public hearing. Anybody have any comments?
Could you take a, can you vote to accept it first, please?
Make a motion that we accept it.
Okay. Any second on that, okay? Any opposed? All in favor? Okay. Any abutters on this that want to speak?
Do you want the applicant to come up?
Yeah. Yeah, where is he? Is it, is it our...
Mr. DeTal?
Yes.
I guess we're doing that. Can you just give us a brief overview of your project, please?
Sure. I'm Vice President of DeTal Oil Company, and 234 Messer Street. I'm tearing down a 235-foot building, and replacing it with a 30 by 100 heated garage for our trucks and everything.
Could you address the site work and the drainage that's going on here?
The drainage is gonna be natural drainage, natural flow going to the existing drainage culvert that's in the yard now. Drainage out of the building is only for ice melt and snow off the trucks when they get back in from deliveries and stuff. There's no, no water going into the building. It's gonna be heated with a hot air system. There's no surge in the building.
Can't get into the lake.
Pardon?
You're along the lake, aren't you? Near the lake? You're...
Yeah, we're, we're 225 feet from the lake.
Right. So, I mean, none of that drainage can go into the lake. It's a natural drainage, you said?
It's a natural drainage.
But none of that can go into the lake?
The Silicon is planning on two new drains going through, on the north and south end of the property. One is to relieve the problem from the 21 drains from Messer Street and Union Avenue, and all of Taylor, the Taylor Home, all comes through one drain, and it's completely destroyed coming through. So they're gonna be blocking it off, and then going on the north end, installing a three-foot new drainage pipe all the way to the lake with oil-water separators on both ends. That's what they are proposing.
Yeah, that's part of the, one of the projects that the city is engaging in right now, in terms of addressing that problem. When do they expect to finish that?
Uh, when I talked to Luke, he was, I talked to him Friday, plus I was talking to Department of Transportation about the railroad side of it, which has nothing to do with you. They found contamination on the city's property, and it requires to clean it up while there's water in the ground. It needs to be washed, and he explained to me, it's a very expensive project, and now that the lake is not due to be drained again till next year, next fall, I believe it was October, that would be the better time to do it, to put the drainage through there. So I think they got a halt on it right now, because if it's all drained out and the water's gone in the ground, they can just take the contamination out, and without washing it.
So when are you gonna raise this building and put up a new one? When do you expect to finish that?
Uh, the demolition is coming in this Thursday. All the, the last signature was from the Eversource, who came down today, took the last piece of electrical off that building. As soon as they knock it down, then I have Fisher Engineering, engineering the concrete for the base. They're coming in on Thursday to do six test pits for drilling, to find out what the soil is like underneath, for the footings, and then Dick Safe is gonna be there at the same time, that's this Thursday. After that, what they, what they find out, I'll know in two weeks.
Do you expect to complete this before, now that this is gonna be delayed until, what, next spring sometime, this project, the city's project, in terms of the drainage? Or next fall?
No, I plan on getting it done this summer.
Oh, you plan...
Because their drainage is not, is not stopping the project, as far as me. It depends on the engineer, this, put the footing in the ground, even though there's, right now, the water's 18 inches down. The land is just filled with water, okay?
Yeah, I know.
So the idea is to, I was told today by one of the city engineers, that you build it like a bridge. You put these huge pylons down on the ground, you fill them up with concrete, and that is your support for your building. And just picture it with nothing underneath, that is your support for your whole building. Okay? And then you cement your floor and all the way around. That's what I was told today. But the engineer, Joel Fisher, he's the one that's gonna design that, whatever he comes up to. I should have preliminaries by the end of the week.
This isn't gonna create any additional drainage issues as we go forward, is it?
No. As a matter of fact, this is a much smaller building than what exists, and really, the nature of the project is probably more suited to our Minor Site Plan Review Committee, but because of the square footage, it gets bumped up to the planning board.
Okay. Yes.
I just had a question, Mr. DeTal. Well, because there are tracks there, you're not gonna require any gas stations or oil tanks, or how will you be handling the environmental impact if you are planning on doing that?
DOT was down there, for the railroad, was down there Friday, and my idea behind the building, because the drip edge comes down, where we used to stand, and it's three feet lower than our track, not the state's track, which was put in in the 1900s so we could take on coal, okay? So that area right there, that drip edge, is ours, okay? So what I proposed to the state was to remove the track, get rid of the creosol contamination from the, you know, the pylons that hold the track up, and that would be paid for by the getting the salvage from the railroad track, which is, there's a lot of track down there. It's, the imprint of the building's 225, but the track goes 100 feet another way, and another 100 feet the other way.
Yeah, I drove and looked.
It's, it's a lot of track in there, and they agreed with it on Friday. I just have to wait for Conca to make the decision, and I'll probably have, they said I'd probably have it in two weeks. My idea is to clean it all out, okay? And then, because they only can reach so far with their mowers to mow down the trees, and there's been fires back there before, from the grass that just grows, and, because you never could get to it. So my proposal was to clean all the track out, refill it back up, but in that ditched part, okay, drainage would be put behind that building to drain out naturally on both sides, back to the regular drainage, okay, and plant grass in there. So we would mow it, I mean, I don't know what they're gonna come up with a, an ease, some kind of an easement, it's like they did the Wild Trail, you know? It'll cost $400 to get the permits to do what I want to do, and they've approved it unofficially, but...
I was just wondering about, I guess it's the Department of Environmental Services in terms of handling oil, and your trucks will be there, and will you have an underground tank or an overground tank for oil and gas? And is there gonna be any leakage or environmental impact from your trucks on the site when you're finished with the construction?
Well, you know, I'm in the oil business, so...
Yes, yes. So I'm just wondering how you're gonna mediate that, because there are certain requirements.
Okay, well, we're gonna be knocking down the building that's at the tanks, okay? But we're moving it back, 35 feet back further from the tanks, and the tanks are all dyked in.
And they're gonna stay there?
They're, they're staying there.
Okay, that was, that's part of my question.
Yeah, that's staying right there. We're due to, in 2020, to have the tanks re-inspected again. It's, it's every 10 years, we have to have them inspected. We have full approval, we have a pollution control plan on-site already. So as far as the impact of what's around the area, I plan on having berms around the drainage culverts, just in case, as they're knocking down the building, and I'm sure there's, I mean, the water's so high in the building, it's, it's crazy. It's, you know, and over the years, the water damaged down the office down there, I mean, last year was two 10-year floods. It only happens in 10 years? Well, it happened twice in one year. I probably had, in the middle of the yard, two feet of water, and it spread for at least 1,500 feet up and down the office. It just floods the buildings all the time, and back in them days, all the beams were pinned into the concrete. And over the years, you know, being, coal bins are all, they're all open concept, you know, your front and backs are open so that you can get to the coal, and so the wind, snow, rain just constantly pours in on these buildings, and it's been 94 years, the building needs to come down.
It does.
It needs to come down, you know, before it falls down.
When you get this over to water, does that cover the railroad ties right now? Does that flow over the railroad ties?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No. The water, the state track is probably...
But the one that you have, your track, I'm talking about?
My track, the water doesn't go over the top of it.
Doesn't touch that at all, right now?
No.
Okay. And what does the state say about removing railroad ties? Isn't that carcinogenic material from years ago?
They said that if the railroad tie stays in the ground...
In the ground, yeah. You don't disturb it, they're saying?
You don't disturb it, it can stay there. Whatever pops out of the ground needs to be taken out, which, that's in the plan. I've already had the asbestos removal down there, or full approval, there was nothing there. So the plan to remove the ties is in the salvage of the track. There's about $8,000 worth of track down there.
Yeah. So, so what's your plan with the railroad ties? Cover them over, or...
Oh, no, no. Take the railroad ties out if they're exposed, and then level it back up to the state's level, where it is now, and then just grass it in.
So you're gonna leave railroad ties and then cover them over?
No.
No.
Any railroad tie that gets exposed, okay, the state says I gotta take it out, okay? There's a lot of them in there, and a lot of them are all...
The ones that aren't exposed, they're gonna be buried, is that what you said?
They would be, they would be buried, that's, that's what they told me. But it wouldn't be behind the new building, the 30 by 100. The middle of that 225-foot was the major part of the building where we took in coal. So the track is still widely, I mean, it's totally exposed back there, so all that has to come out.
So they have no problem with you having railroad ties buried, even though they're carcinogenic in nature, getting into the ground? Is that correct?
That's what they're telling me. They can, they can stay on-site, but I can tell you that probably about 25 years ago, 90% of those ties were redone with the new stuff, pressure-treated, rather than all the creosol and everything, which was, those came from the state of New Hampshire, which I think at that time was the Boston Railroad. Now it's the state of New Hampshire. So most of them are all rotten, most of it's gonna come out. I'd say 90% of it's coming out of it. They're all disposed of properly. The demolition guy, he knows what to do with them, and that's what the state told me. And, you know, none of the property is mine back there, except right to the drip edge. So I just, I'm doing it just to clean it up, you know, back there, because there's thorny bushes, you know, and the Wild Trail is right there, you know? I'm always getting painted on the old building, and, you know, they come and, you know, they'll, they'll spray over it to get rid of it, free of charge because of the Wild Trail. Nobody wants to look at it. And with a grassed area in that area for 225 feet, I think it'd be perfectly fine with the Wild Trail, and the people will take care of it.
Yeah, I'm concerned about the carcinogenic component to it, but I guess that needs more work on it, I guess.
The state's gonna guide you in terms of what railroad tracks you have to move, and what, and what you have to do with them, right? And you're in sync with them, right?
Right. Right. I'll be, I'll have notification by mail, and they said in two weeks.
Okay.
The three people that were there approved what I was doing, told me how to do it, whether the ties came out or not. I mean, some of them are buried in the ground, because they, when they redid the railroad crossing, Bisson Avenue, Messer Street, that's when they disconnected the track, okay? We were taken in by coal, by truck for the longest time from that point, so they disconnected us from it. And I know my great uncle Pete probably paid for the track, it was just a long time easement to, you know, get those railroad cars in there for the...
It's gonna be great.
Okay, so anything else you want to say on your application?
Do you need estimates for the buildings and everything?
No.
Not now? Okay. The first meeting I went to, somebody needed the abutters list. Somebody was asking for the abutters list? Did that get...
We're all set with that, yeah.
It got done?
Mm-hmm.
Also, the lighting for the outside of the building? Somebody needed that?
Yep. Yep, and that'll be at the planning, building permit stage, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. We're not, yep.
Do we need, and I'll take your answer at face value, I just don't know. Do we need a condition that they comply with any state requirements? Is that necessary for this?
It is not. I mean, he's, he's doing that part of the project in conjunction with this, but it's, it's really not part of this application. I mean, he's doing that for his, you know, long-term benefit and beautification, and it's a great thing to do, don't get me wrong, but, I mean...
I'm just asking, Dean.
Yeah, but, I mean, the application is, he's gonna tear down the much larger building, replace it with a much smaller building. We're gonna have less pervious...
Sidewalks.
Yeah, I mean, with less roof runoff, less, we're gonna have less of everything. This is all directionally correct, so this is good.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one, one last question. So when you put up the building, you're gonna do your own drainage at that time, and there's only a short-term problem before the city picks up and changes the city drainage, but you're gonna actually create the flow in your pictures now, so it won't be flooding your new area, you'll be draining off towards the drains?
He's essentially using the same drainage pattern that he has, that he has now.
For now?
Really no change.
Yeah, there's no change on the drainage whatsoever. It still drains fine.
Oh, okay.
The city, there's a 20-inch pipe in the ground now. They're gonna replace that with an 18, so they could pull it through, disconnect us from the main street, after the other north end gets rebuilt, so that the water has someplace to go. And then that drainage takes the easement off, the city of Laconia would be my drainage now, because we have an easement for that, was given to my grandfather for $1 if they gave us proper drainage in there. So the easement will go away as soon as that new pipe gets put in. Other than that, it's all natural drainage to the same thing, except when the new one goes in, it's a water-oil separator required by the state.
Do you have any activity from the city at that site right now?
No.
No? Okay.
Nothing.
Okay. Is that it? Okay.
Yep.
And I guess your review? I guess we sort of had it by questioning you, but...
So, as I said before, the nature of this project is really that he's taking a larger building down, putting a smaller building in its place, going to what Dean said, we're really gaining some green space, the drainage will, you know, the runoff will likely be less than existing, and, and really, it was just the square footage that bumped, bumped it up to the planning board. So we're recommending approval with no plan revisions, standard conditions, including that those lighting specs have to be submitted to us with the building permit, just so that we can make sure that they meet our regulations, and proper erosion control measures if necessary before they start construction, all of which will catch up to the building permit.
Any abutters that want to be heard on this? Any input? Okay. Now we'll close the hearing, and the time is...
I'll make the motion that we accept PL 2017-0076 SP, 183 Messer Street. The conditions that was just, just pressed, give them to SP 4.
So the here, this is closed at 7:01, for the, for the record? And you want to make a motion to accept this?
Do you agree?
Any second on that?
I'll second that.
Second?
I just have a nervous question.
I just have a nervous question.
You have a, yes, any, any, any discussion?
No, this is just a nervous question. Liz did this last time by simply citing the recommendations made by the planning director of the planning department. And our practice, and my practice had been to go through Section 13A through stuff. And I'm just making sure that's okay, 'cause I like the abbreviated, I like the abbreviated one, so...
Okay. David, what I should've said was, the presentation that he had given to us was what I should've said.
I think we should also, just my own input on this here, I, I think we should understand what the effects of railroad ties are, especially the old ones, carcinogenic ones, and, and what the state's input on that is, and so we can understand how it affects our, could affect our water supply. And that's gonna do it to you, by the way, but that would be my input as far as things that we, we should be looking at or understanding, okay? So, yes.
My response, my, you know, I guess response to that would be is that the state has left railroad ties all over the place. If you go along State Route eleven over towards Andover, and I can't think of a little town there that you, you know, where the tracks are. The tracks are still there, the railroad ties are there, and the lake is right there. And those tracks have been out of there since, well, when they pulled those all up, maybe fifteen years ago?
Mm-hmm.
In the state, for whatever reason, I, you know, I don't know why, but they, somebody, and I know they're very sensitive about water and environmental things, so they've left those ties there.
So they don't really know, do they? So I think that...
Well, I'm just thinking that they must already know.
Well, they must know, but we, we should have a better understanding for our own, our own reference, that's what we're gonna do.
And we aren't asking that this applicant...
No, not this applicant, no, no. That was a sidebar, that was, also, that was a sidebar.
I'm always exchanging our knowledge, but I don't wanna put the burden on an applicant.
No, not putting a burden on him.
Okay.
We should know a lot of them. Okay, can we, you haven't made a motion, did you?
Yep.
We did.
Okay, seconded, who seconded that?
I'll second. Charlie did.
And we had, and now we had discussion and close the discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, good.
I have one more. I'll give you seven pieces of paper if your planning boy can get me some sunshine.
In heat, we need a little heat.
Everybody's gonna smile if we get some sunshine, right?
Umbrellas in heat, right.
It's a good project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I think so.
I guess we're gonna just jump down to...
One eighty-three.
Application acceptance for Mercer Street as well as Big Island. So why don't we go with, start with the Mercer Street converting grass and is, is the, is this all in order, the application in order?
It is complete and ready for review, yes.
Ready for you to accept.
Okay, and give a motion to accept this?
It's all set as far as you're concerned. Ready to go for the next meeting, yep? Make the motion that we accept PL 2017-007-6SP-183 Mesa Street as presented.
Okay, you have a second on that?
No.
You have a second, Liz?
Yep.
Okay, any discussion? Yes.
Is this, is this Erwin's?
Yes.
And they'd already done this once, right?
Yes.
And because it expired, we're back again?
Actually.
Actually?
They have a new proposal.
Really new? Like, it's, it's still, they still have an exit going on the Mesa Street, or entrance or exit? More or less?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there'll be a public hearing next time?
So that, yeah, so the, by accepting it, the planning board, I assume, is scheduling that public hearing for the July eleventh meeting?
Yes, for July, for the next, for next month, right?
When's that meeting next month?
July eleventh.
So already here, July's here.
I'm not coming July fourth.
No one is.
We don't.
Did you vote?
Should we take a vote on that? All in favor? Any opposed, passes? We have applicant for Big Island. Is the applicant here and...
This is just acceptance.
This is just acceptance.
Is the application ready for acceptance?
Yes.
At full, okay? All in favor, give a vote on that?
Give a motion first.
Motion on that?
The we accept PL 2017-007-7CUP.
Any second on that? I'll second it.
And so that public hearing would be scheduled for July eleventh also?
And that's July eleventh also.
It'll come back to us July eleventh.
Yeah.
Any, any questions at that point in time? Anybody want any comments about this application? Any input?
When I read this, what are they gonna put on that pad in the water?
This is a, this is, they have already installed the utilities across the, that section of the lake.
Okay.
And they have come up, they, you know, they're, they're, they're not on the, my understanding is they're not on the bottom of the lake, they've been actually put slightly under the bottom of the lake.
Okay.
They now come up on the island, but they are within the wetlands buffer. And where this grouping of utilities comes up, they got electric telephone cable, they've also put in water and sewer where these utilities come up. They need to create a concrete pad to put their transformer and their interface on so that then they can use it on the island.
Do they, do they need state approval to do that?
Uh, yes, and they, and they...
Yes, because they're within, I think, the shoreline area.
Yes, they do. They're either pursuing it or they already have it.
Yeah, they may already have it.
Right. So basically, this is a group of utilities that just come up. Right now, they're just dead end. They're gonna put a concrete pad, install a transformer, which is within the wetland buffer, and, and that's what the conditional use permit is for. That's...
I was just concerned about the electricity coming up out of that water, that's all.
Right, but I don't think it's live yet.
Were they constrained in terms of where they could come up? I mean, is, why are we dealing with a wetland buffer issue at all?
Well, their CUP application has an explanation about those criteria.
Okay.
About why they feel they have to put it where they're proposing.
And we'll just hear that at the...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so they'll be here on July eleventh, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Let's go. And we'll have a motion on that to July eleventh? Okay.
Let me do that.
Here we got that. We got the applicant approved, but we have to do it July eleventh, is that what we're asking for?
We've, we've accepted it.
I just wanna make sure we're talking July eleventh, they're all set for that, right?
There's a motion to accept the application on the table.
Right.
For a public hearing on July eleventh.
So it's been accepted?
No, you have to vote.
No, we voted.
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, discussion, part of that is that it's July eleventh, right? Okay. I guess we're gonna backtrack, I guess, back to...
Mr. Wood, right?
No. Aren't we gonna do the public hearing first?
I'm sorry, what, what do you, oh, yeah, we, yes, I got it on two pages here, yeah, correct, yes.
Do that and then we'll just have these...
Yeah, well, yeah, that, that, that...
Permitted uses.
Someone else is gonna get, is preempting you.
Permitted uses.
We have a public hearing on, on permitted uses.
Yep.
Okay, and...
Let's do that.
So open the public hearing and...
Shouldn't we state what date this was posted?
I'm sorry?
The notice of the public hearing?
I believe last month at the meeting you scheduled it. Is that what you mean?
Wouldn't we send out notice of the public hearing?
In the newspaper?
Yes.
We did that.
We did that?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, shouldn't we tell the date that was duly noticed and where it was noticed? Now I'm just being a difficult guy.
Well, you know, I'm just...
I'm just asking questions.
City council does that, we don't.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess staff could answer those questions when it went out, who noticed it, and I guess you were part of that already, I guess, so...
I was part of the, part of the vote to send this to the planning board. We had a meeting, we voted to send it to a public hearing, and here we are. And we've been duly noticed, so all we need is the public hearing and then a vote of the planning board as to what we're gonna do.
So this is the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody from the public who wanna talk about this, discuss this change?
It's a nightclub one.
And this is the nightclub one?
Uh, do you want me to call that?
Sure. Sure.
Pat moved this stuff. My name is Rich Tilton and my parents own resort in the bay on Wears Boulevard. And so we were at the hearing back when you voted it to not move forward, so they've been in Florida and we've missed some of the time in some of the meetings, and I guess a couple of...
Which meeting were you, were you at? Were you, was, at the meeting where the council said no because of the nightclub issue?
Uh, no, it was before that. The city council said no altogether.
Oh, that was a couple of years ago?
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
So that was, yeah, that was a different proposal.
Yeah, you're...
Right, so what I'm asking is, one of my parents spent the winter in Florida and I don't live up here, and we weren't available for some of the meetings, and I was just wondering if we could get a quick update. And at one of those times, the commercial resort area was, was shifting, and it wasn't gonna, at one point, it wasn't gonna go all the way down towards the Mar Gate, and what I read, it is going...
I'm gonna do this, 'cause I, I know it.
Okay.
Okay. This went over to, originally went over to a recommendation based upon an issue that came up on a zoning board approval relating to a car dealership.
That's the start of it.
Then, you, you understand where I'm coming from?
I do.
All right. It came to the city council. The city council then said, well, maybe we should take a look at the zoning in, in this particular commercial resort zone and make whatever changes may be necessary. The zoning task force came back with recommendations to basically rezone the commercial resort area in a, I'll call it a fairly substantial way. There was a hearing at the planning board, the planning board recommended those changes to the city council. The city council held a public hearing in, which was attended by a lot of people. If I'm getting too wordy, just shut me off.
No, we're good, 'cause we were there, so...
Okay. There was attended by a lot of people, there was a lot of opposition to the zoning change, and the city council voted to not adopt any of the changes. As part of the changes, there was accessory use recommendations that were made along with the zoning changes themselves. The city council didn't wanna consider any of that, so that all came off the table. You don't wanna know the history, but there was some, a proposal by the mayor to change the zoning. It found some opposition on the planning board. The planning board eventually didn't recommend those changes. There was then this proposal as to take the accessory uses and use those as a kind of guide, a guide for the future in terms of any zoning and planning issues that we were going to engage in. And there's currently a master plan committee that's going to adopt, I hope in the relatively near future, a vision statement and a plan use statement that will get us on the road towards making some zoning changes. So these accessory uses were kind of a stopgap measure...
Okay.
...in terms of the march forward on the zoning issues. The planning board initially adopted uses that I kind of was involved with. It came before the planning board, and the planning board recommended those uses to the city council. This gets really complicated.
I know.
The, the, the planning board recommended those changes to the city council. The city council looked at it, and there was a public hearing, and there was some public expression of disappointment that the nightclub provision had been changed to, I think...
You needed permission.
Special exception, special...
Special exception.
Special exception. So the city council said no to the first accessory use proposal, sent it back to the planning board to eliminate the nightclub special exception, leave that the way it was, a permitted use.
Right.
We had a meeting last, at our last meeting, to hold a public hearing on the accessory uses, and it's part of the record that you can access, and if you need a copy, we can get you one right now. Okay?
Yeah, I wanted, I, but I didn't find some of the other documents, so...
Okay, so it comes before, because of the procedural requirements, it comes before the planning board now for a public hearing. Then after the public hearing, the planning board will take a vote to either adopt or not adopt...
Right.
...the new accessory uses. If they move to recommend that the council adopt it, it will go back to the council for what I would propose to be another hearing, but the council doesn't need to hold a hearing, 'cause this is a hearing, and they'll take whatever appropriate action is, is necessary. So that's, not the short of it, but that's the long of it.
So geography does still go down all of Wears Boulevard?
No, this doesn't, this doesn't do anything to the, this doesn't do anything to the commercial resort zone as it...
It'll change any boundaries.
Doesn't change a thing.
It doesn't go down the boulevard. We're only talking...
We're only talking about accessory uses, what's permitted and what's not permitted.
Okay, but...
Existing zones.
In the town. In the existing zone, which does not include the boulevard, or it does?
Yes, it does.
See the map right behind you on that wall?
Okay, it does include the boulevard. All right, I thought we were just talking Endicott Street.
No.
And that's where some of the confusion was, because it's gone both...
We're talking about all of the commercial resort zone.
The commercial resort zone, as it has existed for a few years now, stays exactly the same.
Not changing, as it was gonna at one time.
We're just jiggering a few uses within the zone to try to stop some of the more undesirable uses.
Okay, so in, in one of those campground RV tent is changing from permitted to C.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yes.
So that's a...
But anything that's existing already, there's no effect.
Right. But if, moving forward...
Right.
So that, that's an undesirable business moving forward, or...
Not necessarily undesirable, that's a poor choice of words, my, my bad.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand...
It's, 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 we're putting an additional level of, there's, there are some good places for that kind of activity and there are some not-so-good places, so we just wanna have a little extra layer of approval.
Hopefully we're good places where we are.
Hopefully you are.
Okay, okay. And is there any thought of changing that back to permitted, or is...
Not, not at this moment.
A C is what?
Conditional use.
Conditional use?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
There may be changes in terms of the changes to the master plan and the whole zoning ordinance and all of that, but that's not really part of this at this, at this point in time.
Okay, I just, as this hearing was being held, the primary thing was the nightclub, but since we didn't make all the other meetings, I thought it was the appropriate time to ask those questions, so, thank you.
Anybody else wanna talk on the subject from the public?
I have a comment though.
Yes.
As being a landowner, my name is Johnanne Tilton. We, we do operate the seasonal campground, and we have a hundred and thirty families for the summer. That's a hundred and thirty taxpayers in the city of La Conia. No children in school. We have the enforcers. I don't wanna say La Conia police never comes, 'cause they don't, but, you know, always could be a first time. So I, I think we're a wonderful, wonderful use. The Tilton family bought that property back, how many years ago?
Sixty-five years.
Sixty-five years.
Sixty-five years ago.
Early 50s.
And so now we're fourth-generation operators of this campground. We're retired schoolteachers, business, business person who's come to join his parents in this, in this venture. So, and we've got a college kid and a prep school kid who hopefully will come and help us also, because they love the property as much as we do. So we're very proud of what we do, and it's a great, it's a great place. If you ever get going by and you'd like to stop in, you stop in, and I'll give you a ride in my buggy.
You're up.
And I'll show you around, and thank you.
All right, we do.
Well, just so you'll know, you won't be impacted by this at all, by these accessory use changes. That'll have no impact.
You just, you never know, and when someone changes something-
Yeah, I know.
...you own, you never know what changes. And so we're not saying what you're, what you're asking to do is wrong, but to us, you don't know the future. There's also land available next to us, which used to be part of our family. That's for sale. And so if we were to decide that maybe we wanted to bring that land back into our family, we've now limited what maybe we can and can't do. And as my mother said, I'm really proud of what our, what our family has done. We have a great place, our people pay their taxes, we collect tax money for the city of Laconia when people don't pay their taxes. We do an awful lot, and we just look at it as, it may not be a big deal to a lot of people, but it is the three of us.
Can you tell me again where it is, because I missed when you got up?
Uh, 591 Weir's Boulevard, across from Christmas Island.
It's on the bay.
That place.
It used to be Prescott's Bayview, part of the Prescott family.
Been there forever.
On top.
For much my whole life.
Take care of the land, I mean, we're seasonal and-
Actually, my whole life, yeah.
But-
Laconia loves people like you. I want you to know that.
Excuse me?
Laconia loves people like you.
Totally. We pay our bills, we make sure that our people pay their bills, and we're, it's great revenue, great revenue.
I can't wait for a ride in that buggy.
All right, we're gonna make a date.
We have a speed limit which is nine, which you must follow.
I get in trouble when I go over too fast.
Anybody else that wants to speak on this from the public? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And I need a recommendation from the board here to bring this to the council. Could I have a recommendation, a motion on this?
Well, I'll give a little speech. I don't, I think that this accomplishes what the council wanted to do. I don't think it has, I think it has little impact, if any, on anybody at the Weir's now. It's a placeholder, and I think it's appropriate that we recommend that it be adopted by the council. So that's just my spiel on it, and I'm kind of the architect of it, so take that, I probably got a little skin in the game.
David, you're recommending that it pass with nightclub dance hall being permitted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I would make a motion to accept to return the nightclub use to back to permitted.
Do I have a second on that? A second. Could we have a discussion on that? Yes.
I'd just like to talk to the architect of this.
I can't hear you, Liz.
I'd like to talk to the architect of this proposal.
Oh, he's gotta leave the room right now.
So, to go to, why, what is the basic rationale for going back to P from exception?
The basic rationale was that the mayor and the council, over my objection, had proposed a kind of 400-foot strip-wide chunk of land right up Route 3 with all that open property on both sides, well, at least on the right side as you're going up the hill, all right? With the idea that they wanted to develop or do an enhancement to the zoning ordinance that would attract businesses to come into that area. And there was all kinds of controversy because there was a green space requirement, there were the elimination of a green space requirement, there was, you could do residential on the second floor of any building you proposed, but you couldn't do it on the first floor. So in my view, the idea that we need to do some zoning changes in the Weir's and in the downtown, and probably in a lot of other places, that would enhance the attractiveness of Laconia to-
It's a resort.
-families to come to Laconia and, you know, live here. I thought that that was a valuable enough idea that, and what we were, what we were trying to look, try to eliminate is manufactured housing parks coming in, which is the basic thrust of this, of these accessory uses. You can't do it now. There's enough there already, and it's like, so, so this was a placeholder until we got to work on the master plan, developed a vision statement, and developed a land use plan for the future. So that was the idea of it.
So by going into, back to permitted use, it makes it easier for applicants to come through the process and not have to jump through higher hurdles to get to some commercial business in the area of nightclubs and dance halls.
Yeah. And if you look at the proposed uses, the, the ones that are highlighted are the only changes that we made to the proposed accessory uses recommended by the zoning task force back when this first came before the council. It had to be two years ago now, I don't know. I'm old and senile, I can't remem- Three?
Yeah, two years ago, yep.
However, anyway.
Okay.
City, work slowly. I was just answering Liz's question. If anybody's got any other questions that you wanna ask?
I just have one other. It's just because I don't know nightclubs and dance halls and ordinances around those. Are there hour restrictions and other ordinances around how they're operated?
The only, the only restrictions they have up at Weir's Beach up there is that, is that they have a sound-
Sound restriction.
You know, sound restrictions. You can run your dance hall all night long. The alcohol has to start being served at 1:00 a.m.
Okay.
And drinks have to be off the table by 1:30 a.m. But if you wanna have music all night, that's, you know, if the neighbors are complaining and that, that's an issue.
Okay.
Then it becomes an enforcement issue and not a zoning issue.
They saw it with the police.
Good, thank you, good.
We want to do that.
Which we've had, we've had those issues. We've had the enforcement issues.
The Tower Hill Tavern, right?
Exactly.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that was a big, big issue.
Well, they seem to have worked that out up there. I haven't heard any complaints.
The owner decided to help work out himself, so that's good, as long as we have a receptive owner that's willing to do that. Okay, any more discussion, any more input from anybody?
I take the motion to mean not just the nightclub recommendation, but the whole capable of uses.
Capable of use, yeah.
I mean, the accessory uses are being-
I'd be happy to accept all the accessory uses with the single change of this nightclub permission.
That's, that's well put, Mike, thank you.
So your motion is to, what do you, who made the initial motion?
He wants to accept the-
And you want, and you wanna restate your motion?
He just did it.
Sure. We would accept the permissible uses as is with the change to the nightclub to be returned back to permitted from, I believe, conditional.
Correct. I second it. That's seconded. Okay, any more discussion?
Staff, or you have something?
Need me to say something?
Can you please just add that the places of worship is tucked in at the end, and we want to add that back in to the chart?
Oh, what's it on?
That was in on our last version.
It should be, just confirm for the record.
Confirm that the-
Thank you.
Places of worship would be included in this acceptance. No problem.
With what category?
The very end.
The very end, that's correct.
So the history there, Liz-
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Is that a couple of years ago, we had a change to the zoning chart, and when we sent it forward, instead of adding a new line, someone wrote over that line with a new use, and so it got dropped, so we just need to add that back in.
Great.
House cleaning.
I know we did that at the last acceptance of these.
Yeah, thank you.
We did. We did, and the city council didn't change that at all.
So we're clear on the motion and the acceptance of the motion? Okay, and we're done with discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, let's take a two vote. Who's in favor of the motion? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now, we're on to the first one.
Of us?
Yeah.
Sure.
What are we exactly considering right now?
For this project?
Yeah.
The applicant wants to make a few points, and our, when we get to the end, our recommendation is that we still have some things that we need to take care of, so it would not be to approve.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
That's why we're here, to give you an update on where we are and-
Okay, so what do you-
...update us on? Well, let me begin.
Start.
All right, I'm-
I'll think.
All right. Okay, ready? You want one?
I'm gonna share. Or, wait, Bill, do you need to open the-
Yeah, well, thank you for, it was sort of, he broached the subject here, but yes, I would open the public hearing, that's continuation from-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Patrick Wood of Patrick Wood Law Office. I'm here with the owners and representatives of the gardens at Winnebago Project, Vahia Pelion, Yervant Nahikian. Jason Hill is the project manager and engineer. Chris Danforth is our wetland scientist, and Ethan Wood is my son and right-hand man at the office. We're here to give you an update on where we are, and we have a couple of things that we're gonna ask you to consider and hopefully vote on tonight. We did try to have the sidewalk, that didn't work, so we'll come back to that in just a minute. We have received comments from the Conservation Commission this afternoon at about 3:45. We're gonna talk about that. The Department of Transportation application with regard to the entrance and exit onto Endicott Street East is still in process. Should be a meeting with them in the next week or two to go over some of the details. The updated information has been submitted to the Department of Environmental Services for the wetlands. That's being reviewed. The alteration of terrain permit is in process. There's some additional test pitting that will be done this week or the beginning of next week on that. The sewer connection to the Winnebago River Basin project is still in process. The water department has reviewed the proposal. They've given a report, there are some construction type changes that will be done on the plans and what's being proposed. EverSource is still involved in reviewing the electricity. We don't foresee any problems with that. The fire department, the alarm system, as we said, will be installed. A gate for the emergency, or the access road has been proposed and sent to the fire department for review. We haven't received a response on that yet. So that's sort of where we are at this point. There are some changes, a couple of changes in the project. As we noted the last time, some of the road names have changed, some small configurations. The other thing we've done is the southeasterly corner of the project, we've changed one of the single units, number 85, to a duplex unit. That would be units 85 and 87. We have also submitted a CUP application for the, with regard to the vernal pool, and a CUP application with regard to some steep slope impacts. The other thing that we've done is, at the last meeting here and at the Conservation Commission meeting and at the zoning board, there were issues raised by some of the neighbors concerning lights, so we've added additional plantings on the sides of the property where those houses are, the individual houses plus the condominiums near Endicott Street. So that shows on the new plans as well. So what I would like to do, first of all, is start with the discussion of the vernal pool and the, I think the best way to discuss the vernal pool is to look at this plan, we've handed out a small version of it, the colored plan. The vernal pool is shown in the lighter green on the property. It's in the, almost in the center of the property. The wetland area is basically configured where the woods, the wooded areas are, the darker green. Under your zoning ordinance, it says there must be a 100-foot buffer around the vernal pool, and that, if you just read it the way it is, that would make a circle around that vernal pool, but it doesn't take into consideration what's on the ground. And what's on the ground is basically where the dark green is, that's the wooded area. Everything outside of that has already been disturbed because of the prior development that was there. When this was first started, it was a 30-foot buffer, and so everything up to that 30 feet has been disturbed. On the north-estherly side of the vernal pool, for example, where this, what color is this, Charlie?
Light green, light lime.
Like a lime green, thank you. In that area, and where these units 48, 86, 49, and 50 are, is a large 35 or 40-foot-high mound of rock and stone that has been taken from different parts of the project under the original development, when they were doing blasting for the parking lots that they were gonna put in there and the clubhouse that was near Endicott Street. So there's a large pile of stone and rock here, and I have photographs that we're gonna show a little later, so you can see what that actually looks like. On the other side of the vernal pool, on the other side of the dark green, again where the lime green is and the other green, that area is a large loam pile, where the loam that was taken from different parts of the property was piled up. And again, that's a 35 or 40-foot pile. So the 100 feet, which is shown on this plan in the, it's a dashed line, dashed, I don't know what color it is.
Blue.
Show, it's this line here.
We see it, we see it.
What color is that?
Blue.
Blue, that blue line, thank you.
We can see that circle.
You can see that, all right. That's the 100 feet. And you can see that a good part of that is within areas that have already been substantially affected by the prior development. Why is that important? Because that land is not suitable for habitat for the critters that live in a vernal pool.
Can I ask you a question, Peter?
Yes, sir.
I know you have your presentation, but those, that elevation of the 30, 40 feet on each side, is that gonna be maintained the way it is?
No.
You're gonna drop it, okay?
It's going to be taken down. Okay, all right. Most of it will be taken down.
All right.
All right. The important thing to know about a vernal pool is, you know, what is a vernal pool? A vernal pool is a pond of water that develops from snow runoff. And as a general rule, that vernal pool dries up in July or August. I don't know about this year, because we've gotten a little more rain than usual, we may have water there for quite a while. But during that spring period, when that vernal pool is there, there are three animals that breed in that vernal pool. And Chris can give us more detailed information on that. But the first one are fairy shrimp. And a fairy shrimp is a little tiny animal, and they live for a very brief period of time. And the only thing they do during that brief period of life is they mate to produce more. So their, the primary purpose in life, other than to have fun for that few days that they're alive, is to provide food for other animals.
Do they migrate? Do they migrate like 2 miles away or something?
No, the mid, they, they stay right in the pool. That's all they do. Their life is in the pool.
Okay.
They are born, they breed, they lay their eggs, the eggs drop down to the bottom of the pool, and when the pool dries out, they stay there, and then next spring, they hatch. So that's the...
Can I ask a question?
Fairy shrimp, yes.
It looks like, because of the coloring, that this whole thing is the vernal pool. We're just talking about this area right up...
That's right. This, this little area, this little finger here is the vernal pool. This is all wetland. And this is the green area that's around that wetland. But that, the vernal pool, the actual vernal pool, is this little finger that's...
Okay.
To the west of that.
And I, and the buffer, by the regulation, would be the dotted line, so...
Right, the blue line, that's around it.
So the vernal pool is not going to change, the size of it?
Oh, no. We're not, we're not touching the vernal pool.
And that buffer, that line here for the setback, is that 50 feet away? How far away is that?
30 feet.
It's a 100-foot buffer for the vernal pool.
That's what's being asked for.
That's what we're talking about.
What do I see here? Is she a line here?
Well, there's that...
And what is, what is that? Is that setback of some sort?
Not sure, Mr. Chairman.
That, that line right there?
That's a lot line. The blue line, that's, that's the...
That's the 100-foot, okay.
Buffer.
Okay. And what, what is the relationship between that house and the vernal pool? How far away is that? Is that like 50 feet or something like that?
Originally, they were all 30 feet, because when they had done the, it was initially set.
Yeah, these houses are all at, at least 50 feet away from the vernal pool. All of the, all of these houses are at least 50 feet away from the vernal pool. And the, there are two other animals that use a vernal pool. The spotted salamander and wood frogs. Now, they...
Is that true? There's only three animals? There's only three animals?
Well, yeah.
I'm sure some animals cross in there on occasion.
Yeah, they use it for breeding.
These are the three animals that live in the vernal pool?
They mate in the vernal pool. The mid, the fairy shrimp live only in the vernal pool, they don't live anywhere else. The spotted salamanders and the wood frogs mate in the vernal pool, and their tadpoles grow in the vernal pool. But once they have grown to maturity, they leave the vernal pool, all right? But they stay in that general vicinity, because the salamander, for example, is, is a type of animal that loves to live under leaves and fallen wood and rocks. And so they like to stay where there is a lot of trees and a lot of shade, because they find their food there, but they also are more protected from predators.
I have the same question I asked you before. Do they, do they migrate anywhere? Do they go anyplace or...
They, they go generally in, in the areas that are shown like this.
Two miles away or something?
No, 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 they do not.
They just stay within that general of the...
The idea of the 100-foot radius was, that's generally the area within which they're going to travel.
Okay.
Within 100 feet. I mean, I mean scientifically, and Mr. Danforth can give us more detailed information on it, but the scientific analysis is basically, you need some area around the vernal pool for these animals to be able to travel. The salamanders come back to the same pool every year to mate. The wood frogs, eh, they'll find any pool that they can get to.
That's what bird got them, right?
Well, yeah. So, I mean, there's, and there, there is a phrase for that, the salamanders, but I can't remember what it is. Right. So, so they will...
It's really handy.
Can I just jump in for a second? I have a question.
So I just want an overlay of this, Pat, if we could. So the drainage, I'm trying to marry this map with that. Right now, there's a relatively easy slope from the woods down to the vernal pool.
In this area.
But on the gravel side that you described on the north, or whatever side that is, that's got a steeper slope, as does the south. So you've got two steep slopes that have got trees at the bottom to do some sort of vegetation control or drainage control. And then you've got a gradual slope up, up the far end. Is that the topography?
It's pretty close to that. If we'd been able to get out there and walk it, it really is, is like a cauldron in a volcano, this vernal pool. The, there's a natural ridge, and the photographs will show them a little bit, but it's hard to get that picture. But there's almost, there's a natural ridge that goes around the vernal pool. And then, right at the edge of that ridge, on the north side, is a big stone wall, but if you walk a little farther on, it drops down precipitously.
So there's no more, there's no more wetland beyond that green...
That's correct.
It really has been removed.
Right.
Let you get a word in edgewise, will they?
That's okay.
What you're, what you're getting to is that you're going to give us the justification for why your pool does not necessarily need to sit within the predetermined circle. So if you give us that explanation, that should...
That answers my question.
And what we want to do is, what we're talking about is, instead of looking at this in an arbitrary number, let's look at the real positive benefits to that vernal pool by having a directed buffer. And right now, these property lines could be moved back even farther, so that none of that wooded area is in an individual lot, and that would all be additionally protected. So we can, we'll do that for one thing, so that all of this area that is currently the dark green will all be part of the common area and will be protected from any future development at all. And that also then will feed into this other area, which is a natural flow for that wetland area, which is where the animals are going to go, because they don't want to be in the wide open. They want to be where it's shaded and there's a lot of undergrowth, so that they are protected.
So what you're saying is that these animals don't have like a 100-foot clock in them that says, "I'm just going to go there because that's the boundary"?
No, that's exactly right. They're going to go where they're...
Scientifically proven?
Where they feel safe, that's right. Sort of like, I like to go where I feel safe, so I'm going to go over here for a minute.
If that vernal pool stood by itself, and you didn't have all this other land and wetlands around it, they, that would be adequate for those animals, I guess, huh? But you have all this other area that they could migrate to and...
That's right.
Perpetuate or whatever they're going to do.
That's right.
So really, this affords them, I believe, an area that's, I don't know what the magnitude is, but it's being magnitude of 20 or 30, I believe.
Oh, yeah, it's a lot more than that.
Yeah, okay. For them to survive.
You said that the, go ahead, I'll let you finish. You said that the Conservation Commission made a recommendation this afternoon? Who made the recommendation this afternoon? That's what I heard.
We got, we got a memo from them this afternoon.
Do we have that?
You, you just, there should have been a copy at your seat when you gave it.
This was the additional two sheets.
So the Conservation Commission had a meeting last night, and these are their finalized comments as a result of that meeting.
Their memorandum, it's a two-page memorandum, and with regard to the vernal pool, they said the Conservation Commission strongly recommends, requests that the planning board deny the CUP for impacts of the vernal pool buffer, and they want us to remove all of the houses within the 100-foot buffer. And although they didn't list all of the houses within the 100-foot buffer, they listed five, I believe, yes. Quite honestly, that caught us by surprise, because our meeting with the Conservation Commission didn't indicate that that was their feeling. They didn't make a specific comment, a recommendation at our meeting, but we certainly had an understanding when we left, that they had a better feel for the directional buffer rather than the 100-foot buffer and the rationale behind the 100-foot, the directional buffer rather than the 100-foot buffer. Mr. Anderson's here, and of course he can...
What they say is, the city does not recognize a directional buffer as a valid buffering technique. That's their, that's their language. Do you have any, do you have, do you have any examples that, where directional buffers are approved or considered in other communities, anywhere in the United States in terms of this, or are you, are you unique in this?
I will try to answer that. To my knowledge, the information that we have received is that Maine has been considering this. I can't say that it's actually been adopted in reviewing of buffers around vernal pools. Some states don't have buffers, some states have more than 100-foot buffers, some others. But the concept, I think, that they're all looking for is how do you protect these animals?
And where do they go when they come out of the water, I would think?
Well, that's right. And you want to make sure that where they're going is safe and reasonable habitat for them.
Well, the, the reason I read you the statement is because it's a statement that doesn't give me much information, except they don't think it's valid. So I'm looking for, I'm looking for, I got your rationale...
Right.
As to why you think it's appropriate. And I, I'm not in a position to agree or disagree with you, because I don't, I don't, I don't think I knew what a vernal pool was until the issue came up before, before the planning board. But my question is, I got your rationale, it all makes sense to me. I think it makes sense to other members of the board, as you've heard them express, in terms of a directional vernal pool. But I really think that in order to address this issue, I need a rationale from the commission with respect to their basis is not considered a valid, a valid point. Because if the only, if their only issue with validity is that the rule, or that the rule says 100 feet, and that's that, you know, I'm not impressed with that rationale.
Well, if I may, the, the city says that there should be a buffer around a vernal pool, but it doesn't say that if you're going to change that, you'd have to go to the zoning board to get a change. It says it's a conditional use permit to make a change to that 100-foot buffer. That means that the city has indeed recognized that there has to be some flexibility in reviewing that type of a buffer.
Look, I don't want to get into a debate about that. I want a rationale from the Conservation Commission, and why they, I want something from the Conservation Commission, and I assume we can get it. It tells me something other than, it's not valid and because it's 100 feet. Because if it's a conditional use issue, if it's a waiver, if it's a conditional use...
Anderson, is he out there?
I'm here.
Do you want to talk on that? Come on up and talk about that, will you?
Can I add a point to David's comments? Because I'm right with you, I had the same thing in my head. I wanted to know if originally, when they did the original work plan here, did they approve that design environmentally from a conservation perspective, which would include the vernal pool and the way in which the land was adjusted around it?
Which, which original plan? That was 30 feet back when the initial...
When it was back at a 30-foot buffer.
That's true, right? That circle used to be only 30 feet?
Right.
It was either 30 or 35.
Was there a vernal...
30 feet from any well.
It's a vernal pool.
So was there a species change that made that necessary to get to 100 feet?
The city did not have any regulation on vernal pools per se.
It was a wetland buffer.
Just a wetland buffer, a 30-foot wetland buffer, regardless of what type of wetland it was. That was followed, all right? Since then, we've increased the buffer from wetlands from 30 to 50, and we've added a vernal pool and made that 100-foot buffer. But it's subject to a conditional use permit. And so that's why we're here, to discuss that particular aspect of it.
Anderson, could you give, give us an explanation on the rationale on this 100-foot?
And directional buffer.
When we, when we looked at the directional buffer...
No, 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 not the directional buffer. The 100-foot around a vernal pool. What is the rationale on that alone?
Because it's been determined that from an ecological standpoint, these animals will migrate within 100 feet of a vernal pool after they've mated. And so that was the rationale for having 100 feet. So it wasn't a, it wasn't an arbitrary number. It was more based on science.
Okay, what's your rationale for a directional, a directional is not valid? What's your rationale for that?
The, the issue is, we don't have a regulation that allows for directional.
By making this conditional, you're saying that there might be some possible changes that you'd allow. And I think that's what we're asking to justify, because when you're saying they migrate within 100 standard, but do they follow the topography of the land? Like, is, is that salamander going to say, "Wait a minute, that's an open field, I'm going to go further in this direction instead"? Or they just go right straight out, and then they'll end up killing themselves for being in the grassy area of house?
They will stay in an area that is moist.
So then, if he's providing, I'm sorry...
No, no, go ahead, you're doing great.
Providing the same square footage and habitat that would have been, or more for that matter, would have made up that 100-feet area, then would they have adequate space for these salamanders and whatnot to go, given the size of the vernal pool? So scientifically, are they providing an adequate environment for those animals, which is what that 100-foot barrier was supposed to do?
I think that Mr. Wood's presentation was accurate. That is, they're not going to look to climb a mountain of rocks.
Right.
They're not going to look to go to a drier area. They will stay in a moist area. So does a directional buffer make sense? I've talked to a couple of people from the Corps of Engineers and from D E S, and they said that directional buffers have been proposed in other locations, and they have, in some locations, like Mr. Wood said, they are accepted. We don't have a regulation that says...
Sure. So that's why you're asking, because it's conditional, and we're looking at, from a scientific perspective, are they providing an adequate space for these creatures to survive in, in habitat, this little...
I don't know if it would be adequate, but, you know, if, if you were to look at...
Well, if you're to use your judgment, look at that board, right? Well, if you had to use your judgment, look at that board, right? And you can see where the vernal pool is and then how it attaches to all that wetland going in that direction.
Right.
So if you had to use your judgment, would you say that's adequate or inadequate?
The.
The wetlands.
Using, using.
The way they designed it as a directional buffer.
Yes. The whole area is.
The whole area.
As a scientist, I would say that that would be where the animals would, would live.
So they're environmentally protected?
Yep.
I would, I would think they would be more environmentally protected than a pile of rocks.
So they're environmentally protected, and the goal of the buffer is to protect the animals, right?
Right.
So if their directional buffer is protecting the animals and providing them with, with an adequate habitat, then wouldn't you agree that it might be subject to a conditional use?
I wouldn't use the word adequate. I would use the word that an appropriate habitat would be something that was wet.
I, I would agree with that. But your, your, your problem is that it's 100 feet, that's the regulation, and we, we need to apply the regulation.
So here's, so I would like to.
We are applying the regulation.
With the conditional.
With the condition.
Yeah.
That something adequate was put in its place. Because nature doesn't follow a perfect circle.
So could I introduce a piece of evidence that came in our package?
What's the evidence?
Well, a piece, not evidence, but there is a very interesting document here from Aram Calhoun from the University of Maine. And it says, "Given that current vernal pool regulations rely on regulating set circular zones around pools and may not conserve pool breeding species or meet the needs of landowners." And then it goes into directional buffers are a vernal pool management tool that allows a flexible approach to conserving pool breeding amphibian habitat. And that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
And I think that that's what we're talking about, is it gives us a good alternative to the circular.
And, and the, the issue that came up was, we understood why this was being proposed, but we didn't have a regulation that would, you know, honor that, that type of a buffer.
Thank you. So what we really need was your explanation on it, to saying that, you know, hey.
It was the regulation.
You're, you're going by the letter of the law, but not necessarily is it that functional in this particular case?
Not is.
Right, and this is what we're talking, this particular, yes, great, question? Yes.
What?
So, not disagreeing with where apparently a majority of the board is going. But please keep in mind that if we adhere to the 100-foot buffer, eventually most of that land would become habitat, because it would grow over. The leaves would be there, the moisture would be there, the trees are going to grow up, the underbrush is going to grow up. Right, so that's point number one. And that's, that is the point of all of our buffers. It's not necessarily, you know, whether it's the 50-foot buffer or the 75-foot buffer or the 100-foot buffer for vernal pools. It's a number, and yes, you guys can give relief, relief to that number. But when it's a 50-foot buffer to the wetland, we're not looking, it follows the contour of the wetland, just as this 100-foot circle follows the contour of the vernal pool.
But they're not synonymous.
I understand what you're saying.
They're not synonymous, what you're talking about.
Because right now, there's giant cliffs of, of garbage piled up there. So they would have to artificially create your circle. And I think if you're going to artificially create something, does it make logical sense to, to look at what the developer wants and what is going?
And I think you're overlapping the intent of wetland setbacks versus this here.
The second thing to keep in mind here, the second thing to keep in mind here is the directional buffer that they're proposing conveniently conforms to the wetland buffer that they have to maintain anyway.
So it's kind of a win-win, if you think about it.
It's definitely a win for them.
Well, why is it, I'm asking you, why is it a loss for the species?
It gives them more units.
Well, so much.
That's what they're looking for. Sounds good. If it works out for the species. So I think what we're all asking is.
So, okay, so.
Is it a win for the species too?
Just, just think about other conditional use permits that you have allowed. And, and let's face it, there are a lot of conditional use permits that are granted.
Right.
Okay? You're not looking, you have not been looking for new science, new justification, whatever, to grant those, release from those buffers. You've just said, the buffer is 50 feet, they're proposing 40, I'm okay with that. Done. The buffer here is 100 feet. If they're telling you that they're going to give you 50, say to yourself, 50's enough, I'm good. Do not introduce, please do not introduce directional or anything else and set precedence.
Well, I don't, I disagree with that.
It's all part of the consideration.
Specifically, it's, we're not limiting to 50 feet. We're actually asking a scientist to say that this is making an adequate place for those. So we're not just shrinking it, we're saying, is there room for
The place that they're going to.
The spirit of the rule to exist.
The place that they're going to go to, and, and I'm not disagreeing with that. The place that they're going to go to is the exact same place that's being preserved by our standard wetland setbacks.
So I, I think what I'm asking is if they reshape this artificially, because it's all artificial, and right now it's pretty much horrible. If they said, we're going to make a perfect circle, cut back woods to hit that circle, so then they brought these houses in, got rid of that tip wooded area too. I'm like, what I'm asking is, is in this approach, are they still providing almost a squares, the same square footage of what that perfect circle would be? So are they really still abiding by the spirit of what the buffer really represents? Which is what I think in a condition, we can, we can ask about.
In a perfect world, the buffer is maintained in its natural state.
There's no natural state here, right?
I understand that. But if you maintain the 100-foot buffer, or whatever foot buffer that you want to maintain, and there's no development within whatever that distance that you decide is reasonable, it's going to grow up. It's going to expand the habitat area eventually.
If the habitat area is adequate now, why do we need to expand it? That's my only question.
I don't think.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you. If you think it's inadequate, then we, we should know that. Because that's really the question that I think we're all going to wrestle with.
That's absolutely the question we're talking about. And that's why I'm looking at it in terms of, it's not just a perfect circle. Are they giving us back in some other area that buffer?
More. No, they're not giving you back, because everything that becomes the buffer, that's the directional buffer, is already protected. It's, it's not additional area that they're giving back. It's, it's all of that area that's directional buffer giving back is my.
Is the exact same area that they have to protect already?
So is the exact same area that they have to protect already, providing those creatures with what would have been, if they didn't have to protect it, the same square footage of that 100-foot barrier circle? Are those animals going to have the same place to live in the long run? Because I'm, if, if the answers know it's going to be detrimental to those animals, then maybe we, they would lose a couple of houses. But I'm not going to tell a developer, you're going to lose X amount of dollars.
I'm not qualified to answer that question.
Well, that's why we brought these guys.
So, so I have a question for you.
Sure.
So if, if we're going to do that, let's, let's say that we go down the road of the directional buffer. The directional buffer for a vernal pool. That's what we're talking about, vernal pool. Now I'm talking about wetlands now, we're talking about vernal pool.
That's what we're asking you to talk about.
Right, so if we do that, if we, if we give them the directional buffer, are we going to make them stay 100 feet out of that directional buffer for a vernal pool?
Yes.
Are we going to do that? Because that's what you're talking about. You're not, you're not talking about what they're asking for, that's what we're talking about. But, but.
It's not hypothetical, this is, he's got pictures.
Yeah, it's not hypothetical, so we have a circle here.
This is not hypothetical.
I, I understand that, I understand what you're saying.
So let's keep it within the target.
What I'm saying is that if, if this is, if this is going to be the directional buffer, are they going to stay 100 feet out of that buffer? And the answer, I believe, you know, I haven't measured it.
They wouldn't hear.
What do you mean 100 feet?
I don't know.
I don't, but I don't know why that's, that's relevant.
Well, we're saying a vernal pool should have 100-foot buffer.
Can I just, no.
In the chair, can I shut that down for a moment?
We're saying, we're saying, we're exploring the possibility of saying something different.
Right.
We're saying that the goal of the 100-foot buffer is to protect the habitat. That's what we're saying. What we're asked, the question we're asking, does a directional buffer accomplish that? If the directional buffer accomplishes that, then that, that is why we have conditional uses. Because it accomplishes the goal of what it is the buffer is intended to accomplish.
Exactly.
I'm listening to you, I haven't decided this case, this matter in terms of what's going on. I hear you, I hear what a 100 buffer, 100-foot buffer accomplishes. And I'm not certain that that's not what we want to do. So I'm, I'm in here, all I want to make sure is that we frame the argument. And the argument is this, the 100-foot buffer is intended to protect the habitat. Do we do that with a directional buffer? Do we want to accomplish more with additional buffer? Those, those are questions that are going through my mind. And I have one further, one further question. On this 50-foot setback, didn't you get a waiver from the zoning board or something in terms of the setback?
Not from the buffer. There's a, in addition to the 50-foot buffer from the wetlands, because it's a cluster development.
Yeah.
You also have a 10-foot setback from the 50-foot buffer.
So you've got a waiver for the 10-foot setback?
We've got a variance for the 10-foot setback.
How many homes? For the, for the total?
I think in general.
Well, a few of them.
Okay.
But.
So, and so my question is, are you going to, are you going to meet your mark of 50 feet in terms of what you're proposing here?
One house is within the wetland buffer, only one house, a 77. All of the other ones are outside of the 50-foot buffer. There are some houses that are within the 100-foot circular buffer around the vernal pool.
And that's really what we're talking about?
That's what we're talking about tonight.
All right.
Okay.
So the one house that's in the wetlands, has that been approved?
Not in the wetlands, in the buffer.
In the buffer, has that been approved? That, that's got a, you had to go to the zoning board for that?
No.
You're going to come here for that?
That's part of the conditional use permit.
Oh, I get confused.
Can I move this on?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. And Pat, you want to continue on with your presentation?
Yeah, I would like Mr. Danforth to just talk to a couple of points. He's the wetland scientist at Danforth, so I'm going to ask him to just talk a little bit about this subject.
Well, Pat takes a lot, a lot of my thunder away.
Could you talk on the microphone, please, I can't hear.
Hi, I'm Christian Danforth, I'm a wetland scientist from TF Moran. I did the initial investigation out here, and this spring, went out and did the investigation and found the, the vernal pool. Vernal pools are special habitats. I found three species out there that are considered facultative indicator species, which are the fairy shrimp, spotted salamander, and the wood frog. About the buffer, the 100-foot buffer is, is a, is a town regulation, it's not a state, state requirement. There is no buffer from vernal pools in New Hampshire, or federally. So the 100-foot is, is an arbitrary number. It's, it's not necessarily, you know, there's a lot of debate about that right now. And there, there's a lot, a lot of discussion on buffers.
Who's debating it?
The feds, the state, conservation organizations.
I assume you can provide us the, the information of that ongoing lively debate?
Well, I could probably give you a website, and I'm sure you find plenty of information on that. But basically, you know, the directional buffer, I, I find is, I think it's a really a perfect situation here. You know, the, the 100-foot circular buffer around this vernal pool, it's, it's not sustainable, it's not adequate habitat for the vernal pool species. They're going to look for wet situation, they, they like stumps and, and wet areas. This existing wetland is sustainable, it's been there god knows how long.
The planning director seems to think that if we did the 100-foot buffer, that it would return.
Well, it would, you know, it will grow vegetation, I, I, you know, I can't guarantee what kind of vegetation, and it's not necessarily the, the appropriate vegetation. You know, these, these are reptiles that require moist conditions. Most salamanders live underground, most of the time, they come out only to breed. The wood frogs will maintain in a, in a wet area.
Have you done any measurements out here?
Measurements in terms of?
From the vernal pool to where your proposed boundary would be? Your directional boundary would be?
To the west?
Yeah.
It's about, about 130 feet to the edge of that wooded area.
No, I mean from the middle of the vernal pool, straight diagonally to the right. Up to the.
Into the house lot.
Into the house lots, into the pile of rocks and into the dirt.
Distance.
Is this scale?
Yes. 1 inch equals 40 feet.
It can't be 140 feet, I want 1 inch.
1 inch equals 40 feet.
Which would be 40 feet.
1 inch, ton to 40, right.
Now, which dimension would you like measured?
No, I believe you.
This dimension?
Yeah.
Yes, that dimension right there, and the dimension on the other side.
And here?
Yes.
This dimension is, it's 40 scale. So from, we're measuring this line right here. That's 52 feet.
52 feet.
And this dimension, right here, 51 and a half, 51 feet.
So you're halfway there.
Yeah, that's the minimum dimension too, would be from any unit to that.
And what is it going up to the left?
What's the dimension to the northwest?
Up to where all the wood line is.
That way, right.
What's that dimension, to the back of my house, over there?
From 43, unit 43, to the edge of the vernal pool. Make sure I got the scale right, it's 40 scale, it's 79 feet.
No, it can't be.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was looking at 20.
It's 100.
Yeah, it's 40. Yeah, it's 160 feet.
150 feet.
And on the, the north, I don't know what side that is, that's, that far side, yes. That's the steep grade, right? So if you were going to be.
This is where the rock pile is.
That's the rock pile. So if you were going to do your circle of 100 feet, you'd probably have to, again, do a different grading for the vegetation to be the right vegetation. And the same thing with the different grading on the other side.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Suppose that we said they had to do 100-foot buffer. Could we make them move the rocks? Could we make them move the dirt? Could we make them do anything to change the habitat so that it, if, if we said it's 100 feet?
No, so.
And then you got to build a buffer there? We can't do that, can we?
So our, our regulations do provide for replanting in buffer areas when things are disturbed. This is previously disturbed, so it's not that. However, I think the directional buffer is, talking about that is a little bit confusing. Really, what we're talking about is that our regulations apply 100-foot circular buffer, right?
Okay.
And the point of a buffer is to minimize impact on that buffer area to provide protection for the actual wetland or vernal pool, or whatever we're talking about. So the question the board has to ask themselves is, are, is any of the proposed construction going to impact that area? And are you okay with that because of maybe the unique geography of the site in this case, or whatever other reasons there might be? So, so that's really what you're asking yourselves. It, because by granting the CUP, you're granting them the ability to do work in that 100-foot buffer. You're not changing the shape of the buffer. You're granting them the ability to do work in that buffer. So that's really what you're asking yourself, not is this directional buffer adequate? It's, are we okay with the impacts they're proposing?
Of letting them work within the buffer?
Yes.
That's a really nice way to frame the question.
That's all, that's all, I, I think the directional buffer thing, I, I get the logic of introducing it, but it's not really what you're asking yourself here.
So can I ask you a question? So you're saying that the buffer does not exist, was not specific. So you're saying that the buffer does not exist, was not specifically put in there to protect a species in that area?
The buffer exists to protect the resource itself, which could be the wetland or a vernal pool. So there's just different distances for the buffer. But the buffer in general, that when we have it, is for a wetland or the vernal pool. Vernal pools in a wetland, anyway. So, so it's to protect the actual resource itself and to provide an area so that creep doesn't happen or, or, or any development that does happen is, is done thoughtfully or in such a way that the board has an opportunity to evaluate the particular site and see if they feel that, that's okay in that instance. Because every, every, every parcel is different.
Well, the houses that they...
My question to her, to you is, you mentioned though, done thoughtfully. Because this area is already disturbed. So to me, this is the exact reason why we bring up conditions. Because the area's been, been disturbed and damaged and we're, we're being presented with a thoughtful design that is beneficial to developer. No one's denying that. And what, what I'm trying to say is it's a little bit more than just working within that area. Because you're almost asking them to work in that area because it's damaged.
Yes.
So if you're saying, I don't want them to work in that area, you're defeating the purpose of the protections in the first place. Which is why I'm asking also, can they work in that area? But also, is the design they're presenting thoughtful for why the buffer was put there in the first place? And, and for the conditions that this property's in, I think you have to ask both questions. I don't think it's, you can't not take into some consideration the design they're presenting for the original purpose of why these buffers were put there.
Yeah, that's exactly what I said.
Well, no. That's not, because you said we weren't supposed to ask about their design and I think that is part of it.
No, 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 no. I said, are you okay? Is any of the proposed construction going to impact that buffer? And are you okay with that impact because of the situation?
But that buffer has already been impacted.
Yeah. So yeah, working in it is, sorry, I use impact to mean temporary or permanent. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
We can all, we can all agree that the buffer has already been impacted. Correct?
Yeah, correct. Nope.
Go ahead.
No, I'd say no. I mean, I'm waiting for this presentation.
You're the chairman, I'm following you to the letter.
And you just follow what I'm saying.
Going to serve you.
You can sit down for a moment, yes.
A question was raised here. This vernal pool is man-made. You meant, this is the very original...
No, no, no. This is a natural, there were other man-made pools.
This is the very original natural pool.
This existed...
The only thing natural on the site.
This is the only natural thing.
This existed in 2005 when they did this initial, okay.
Yeah, this is a pretty classic vernal pool, in my opinion.
And it's been doing pretty good with the rocks?
With the wetlands.
With the rocks and the dirt.
Connecting to the wetlands, right, you got it.
If I may, if I, if you go to my written presentation on page three, we go through what the requirements are for review of a conditional use permit application with regard to this buffer, this vernal pool buffer. And I think we've, we've talked a lot about these things tonight in some general and some specific terms. But what we're basically saying is that what we have currently existing on the site serves as a sufficient and adequate area for these animals and for the support and sustenance of the vernal pool. And as Ms. Laughlin is saying, we're asking basically for permission to build within that part of the circular 100-foot buffer that's already been disturbed.
Do you have a question, Pat?
Yeah.
How, what kind of distance are you not going to be disturbing? Is it like 50 feet?
We just did 50 feet on one side and 50 at 50 on the other.
No, that's 50 feet to the house. We're going to have yard and we're going to have human beings doing what human beings do.
There will be...
That's important to me.
Absolutely, the absolute minimum in a couple of areas is 30 feet. Because that's what was previously not disturbed, okay? We talked about moving some of these lot lines a little farther away so that none of them are within that area. So we're going to keep as much of that as possible. The houses themselves are 50 feet away from the vernal pool. Okay? But as part of the construction, there may be some temporary disturbance within the 50-foot buffer in order to complete the construction of the houses. But once that's done, we're going to make sure that there won't be anything in there. In fact, coincidentally, my...
So you're going to impact this, the green space that we've marked here, that you want to be part of your directional buffer? You're going to, when you do the construction, you're going to actually impact the space that you want us to consider as the directional buffer, right?
No. I'm not, you mean the, the light green area?
No. I assume that...
None of the dark green area is going to be impacted. Is that, is that what your question is?
I assume that the dark green area is along the 50-foot buffer.
No.
Where's the 50-foot buffer?
It doesn't show on this plan. It shows on other plans, but it doesn't show on that one. In fact, okay, right.
I'm tired and I want to go home.
Here or not?
This is the, this is the 100-foot buffer. This is the wetland buffer. So you can see, I'm slightly into it.
That's why they're saying...
This is the wetland?
Yeah, that's what it says according to wetland buffer impact. So there's some impacts in it.
I think you can.
And that's why he's saying like, see that house tips right in there? There's some impact there.
Some impact across here.
Yeah. So I mean...
The, on this, on this plan, you can see a dark line and a lighter line. If you can see the lighter line, I'm not sure if you can.
I want to get around that.
The dark line is 60 feet. That's with the 10-foot setback.
No, the 50-foot buffer does show on this plan, but it's actually, it's the line which changes color.
That's the edge of the light green.
That's the inside.
All right, so I'm going to make you start over.
And also, those boxes there where, where it says wetland buffer impact, that's describing?
Yeah, 50 feet. This, this line here is 50 feet. The yellow.
That yellow?
Yeah.
Bad color. You can't see it.
And then this line is the 60, the 10-foot zoning setback off of the, off of the buffer.
Okay, so where the yellow is on this map is the 50-foot wetlands buffer, right?
Yes, correct.
And then you have right next to, right into the other green color, a dotted line. That's the setback, correct?
That's the 10-foot setback. Yes, correct.
And the last time we were here, we talked about some retaining walls that will be in the light green area or yellowish green area. Okay, so with this map...
And what you were saying was some of the yards go into that buffer, but that's still not talking about the vernal pool issue?
No.
What's highlighted here?
It's related to the vernal pool issue, just as it's related to the wetland buffer. It's, they're encroaching...
Yeah, the water color is the round, the proposed disturbance. The areas of proposed disturbance associated with construction.
Is, is which color, sorry?
Yeah, this encompasses the yellow. The edge of the yellow is the 50-foot setback. In the, inside the area hatched is the work, the area of work.
So Pat, I have a question.
Draining indoor roads.
Go ahead, Charlie, what do you have?
What, maybe I missed it on here. What, because what the planning board director brought up, people doing what they do. Is there any protection for this area? So if somebody wants to throw stuff in there or make a pathway through there, to take a shortcut? Is there, what protection is there for that?
I was just going to start saying that. I just, my oldest son is buying a house down in Florida. And in the covenants and restrictions, there are substantial covenants and restrictions that relate to stormwater management systems. We have a declaration of covenants and restrictions that we've prepared in which there is language dealing with protecting these areas. But having now seen some of that language, I may be able to add some additional protections for that as well. But the idea is that that area, side of the lot lines, is going to be common area and is supposed to be protected from any future encroachment or development and...
But what's the protect, is there going to be a physical barrier?
Well, because the words are great. Can I, can I just make a comment about that? What we, what we do Charlie is we have, we have him come up with a protocol, a maintenance protocol. And if that encompasses, we're just saying whatever might blow in there, paper, whatever may be blowing in there. That's part of what they commit to and then we monitor that, yes. So they outline what they're going to do, storm drain cleanouts and all that.
Who, who monitors that?
Well, suppose we monitor, we pick and choose evidently.
But who, is that the code enforcement or? What else were you going to present? Because quite frankly, at this point in time, just in the discussion of the vernal pool, I don't think I have enough information. And I really want to have the recommendations from the planning department. If there's no other issues or if there's some other secondary issue...
Well, you're calling the, you're calling the issue here and I don't think that you should be doing that right now.
I got the right to do it, Bill.
Well, I'm calling, I'm, I'm, I mean, make his presentation. Let's get that completed and then we'll move forward on calling a vote on the CPUs, that kind of thing. So don't try to circumvent what he's trying to do.
I'm not. I have a right to ask a question.
Then ask the question.
The question is, what else is on the table tonight besides the vernal pool? And I'll ask the applicant.
Steep slopes and the sidewalk waiver.
Sidewalk waiver. What's the story with the sidewalk?
All right. Take the easier one. Sidewalk waiver, we're asking, as you can see on this plan, there is a sidewalk in front of every one of the units in the development. But at the northeast corner of the property, heading north and then northwesterly towards the pump house and the new units, that's a fairly steep slope. And I don't have the grade right in front of me, but the engineer probably can give us that grade. But what we're suggesting or requesting is that the requirement for a sidewalk along that portion of the perimeter drive be waived. Because first of all, we don't think anyone's going to be using it, certainly in the wintertime. There isn't going to be a great volume of traffic so that if somebody wanted to walk down the street, they can do that as they do in many neighborhoods throughout the city. And, you know, maintaining that particular stretch of sidewalk would create a number of, we feel, unnecessary burdens on the project for very little benefit to either the members of the associations or the city as a whole.
There is a sidewalk on the side of the houses, though.
Yeah, wherever there's a house, there are sidewalks.
It's just on the opposite side.
Would there be a contribution to the, to the, with the waiver?
Well, that depends on how the board decides to vote. If you vote to grant the waiver, they get the waiver for that portion. If you vote to deny the waiver...
They want to waive this.
You can give them the option of installing the sidewalks or doing the payment in lieu.
I have a question. What does the staff, how does the staff feel about this? Because the staff usually guides us.
So the staff doesn't have full recommendations for this project yet.
Okay.
All right, so that's the waiver issue. What else?
The other is the steep slope. Can I have the chair back? Thank you.
I never took the chair from you.
Well, you do. You assert yourself, counselor. Now, this is our court, you know.
Just asking questions.
Go ahead.
All right. There are a couple of areas that we're requesting relief in the form of a conditional use permit for impacts into steep slopes. And I just want to get the little map that I've attached. We've got a big version of that map.
It indicates the impact area, which just shows the slope.
All right. I have one map that shows the steep slopes and then the impact area and the... I'm going to move this map over here. In order just to be consistent, I'm going to see if I can't put it this way.
Thank you.
Okay. This is the aerial photograph of the site. And the photograph that we'll see later, you can see where the perimeter road has already been substantially graded and cleared. And it's not a road by any means, but it, it has already been substantially disturbed in that area. So the, the steep slope areas that we're talking about disturbing, there are a couple of them. Some are restricted slopes and the others are prohibited slopes. Am I saying that right? Restricted and...
Prohibitive and precautionary.
Precautionary and prohibitive. The prohibitive ones are the ones in the...
Rose color.
Thank you. In the, I would say orange or whatever that color is, whatever that is.
We understand what you're saying.
Okay. The, the one on the southerly side of the, head of the, the...
You're always right up.
Key of the development is where the road basically already has been cleared. That's in this area along here. Now, the road has to be so many feet from the property line in order to maintain the ability to keep the road, it also needs to be a sufficient distance away from the wetland. So we're in a very restricted area in that part of the development. So there's a small area of prohibited slopes that are being affected by the road. And I think I've given you some dimensions on that in my written explanation. The other area of prohibited slopes is up in this driveway area that services these two houses. That area is also, again, very small. This is not a large area by any means. And we're not even sure that it qualifies as a steep slope under the definition because it doesn't...
Are you talking about your 12-page letter of April 25th?
That's it.
Okay.
Is it 12 pages? Wordy, all right, nine pages I have.
I have seven of 12 dated April 25th.
Oh, no, this is May 8, 2017.
I'm looking for that.
In that...
In what page on that document?
So what is the percent slope on that? Do you have any numbers on that?
They're over 30...
4%, 8%? What am I...
The prohibitive slopes are greater than 30%. The other ones are between 25 and 30. So we're impacting...
So when do, when do we go beyond, or when do we fall into the definition of a steep slope in this, in this case? Or any case?
I think the definition of a steep slope is anything from 15% and above. 15 to 25 is a permitted area. 15 to 25 is a permitted area to work within. The 25 to 30 is the precautionary and the 30 and above.
So what does precautionary mean?
It means you have to be careful when you're going there.
Just, I mean, it doesn't mean you have to mitigate it to make it down to 15%. It just means you have to be cautious when you're in there?
That's right. You have to make sure that when, if you're going to disturb that... The, the primary purpose of the steep slope area ordinance is that if you're going to disrupt that steep slope, you provide protection, downgrade...
A path or something like that.
Downgrade from that so that you're not having a negative impact on people down slope from you. That's the primary purpose of the, of the steep slope ordinance.
So you can work on it, but the point is that at some point, you know, if you are beyond 25% or something like that, then you would cover it, cede it, I would think.
Right.
And then that would hold back any erosion on that.
That's exactly, that's, that's exactly the...
So if you're not prepared to do that, I don't know what the issue is then. I'm confused.
But that's, that's what we're prepared to do.
So they're doing work in areas that meet our definitions of precautionary and prohibitive slopes?
Yes.
Okay. It's just like doing work in a buffer. They need a conditional use permit. That's all.
That's it?
That's it.
I mean, so it's, it's acceptable by what he's saying they'll do, I guess.
I don't have a recommendation for if it's acceptable. I'm just saying that that's the situation.
Okay. So there is a...
That's why they're here for that.
Gotcha. So there's a way of mitigating it, you know, from the fact that we're considering how to prevent...
Yes.
Any erosion issues? Yeah.
So you don't have recommendations for this yet? Is that, you're still working on it? Or you're still like negotiating kind of the project?
This project, as you can tell, has a number of...
Issues.
A number of things that need to be reviewed and addressed. It's been a little bit slow on our end for a number of reasons because we've had some third-party reviews that we had to send it out to engineering. We are not engineers in-house. We want to make sure that we're doing this right. Particularly with issues that may come up at other projects. So we want to make sure that we're very clean in our reviews. So at this point, what we are anticipating is that we will have another TRC meeting with the applicants next week. Depending on the outcome of the, we've got two out of three third-party reviews back. And depending on the outcome of that meeting, we may, we hope to be prepared with full recommendations for July.
Okay.
The applicant wanted to come and talk to you this month and...
And what's on our agenda here is that I see these different CUPs. And I think this is a big bite for us to take everything on at this moment, to discuss it all. So I would entertain a motion to accept the wetland Vernal Pool CUP as well as the steep slope CUP. And then we'll put the other stuff onto the, after...
So if you accept those tonight, you have zero conditions unless you're going to come up with some tonight.
I, I would agree with that. I think, I understand the reason why they would want to come in. However, not all the studies are back. We don't have a full recommendation and I think that's...
Well, we understand what a wetland and a Vernal Pool is. We understand that. So do we want to say, we want to focus on that?
No, because that's just a definition. So it's understanding. It does not completely understand the impacts.
What's the procedure? Would I table the, would I move to table the application until the next meeting? Or what procedure would I use to continue?
So I think the applicant wanted the opportunity to have these discussions that you've been having. So that in the next month, while we're working with them, if there were any questions that came up here that we could do, we could talk about it with them and try to get those resolved for July so that it all wasn't coming up in July. So, so, so I think that was the, the intent of that, so that we could then, behind the scenes, try to get that worked out. So I don't want to stifle any more conversation or presentation from Pat, but I still would not recommend that you approve any of this tonight. There are no conditions set out for you.
Is the mechanism to table it?
It would be to continue the public...
Continue.
Yes.
Well, then I move to continue this, I move to continue this application. There'll be discussion.
I just wanted to know if you wanted to see the pictures.
I, I think I have a firm understanding of what's happening.
I don't, you know, the, the pictures are part of the application. I really don't feel like I have enough information to, to do anything. I feel like I, I'm not as sure as Bill is about the Vernal Pool. I'm certainly not as sure as about the prohibitive and...
Precautionary.
Yeah, slopes. So I, I don't know where I'm at. And I would just rather take the time.
So what, can I ask a question then to you? I mean, what will take us to get the next step? What do we need to make us?
I'm going to file a recommendation from them. So I move to continue this.
I, I would ask it as staff, if there are any particular questions or issues or things that you want us to address or you want addressed by the applicant or, or to work out or whatever it might be, that you please give us clear instructions for that tonight or, you know, call us or whatever it might be.
So let's get some instructions on what your concerns are, David, Vernal Pool or whatever.
Okay. I move to continue this till the next hearing. I want input from the planning department on all of the issues that the applicant is asking a waiver for or an exception for with respect to the steep slopes and whatever other issues that they think that they need a special exception, a conditional use, however you want to use it. I want to report from you on those issues. And I, I assume you would meet with the applicant to address those issues. I've heard a lot about the Vernal Pool. I'd like a little more science on that. And I'm really skeptical about the steep slopes, but I'm willing to listen.
What, okay.
I would, I would second that.
Well, it's a good start. And we were just, in general, I know. So my question becomes, what is, what type of science was acceptable for us to review? In other words, we have a wetland man here? Is that sufficient? I don't know.
I think Liz gave us a start when she cited that article. I want, I want some information about other areas and directional, some scientific evidence. I, I, not that I don't believe you, you know, but I, I would like some scientific evidence in terms of the directional as opposed to the 100-foot buffer. And the question we're wrestling with is, at least in my mind, if what you're proposing satisfies anything you could get from a 100-foot buffer, I'm going to be very happy with that result, apart from Dean's concerns about what we're giving up. And I'm going to ask the planning department to address that and ask you to address that.
I, I would second that sentiment because I understand that there's economic benefits to this, but we, we're actually asking for the conditions to weigh both. Like, are we getting from not just the directional design, but the design presented? Like, is it the right directional design? To, to be able to have evidence that says, look, for, for the spirit of the buffer, is the design presented, which does economically benefit? I think that's good, but it still has to benefit the environment, the, the way the intention of the buffer was presented. It does not, in my opinion, need to be a perfect circle. But if they presented a design that was thoughtful and did provide you with the future, because you mentioned the future too, of like, well, if this was a perfect circle, eventually it will become the right environment. Well, does their design have a similar effect? So that the environment and the developer can win in this situation? And that's all I'm really asking. It's like, can, can we evaluate their approach to solving these problems? Because this property's already damaged. It's not like they're going into virgin forest to, to really look at this. So in, they're doing some benefit just by coming in here and developing it. So that's, that's what I'm asking too.
So how do we, how do we achieve that?
I think by next meeting, we should have recommendations that incorporate some, what we've discussed here. That's, and that's what the most...
So I mean, you need outside?
If you need more time, you should tell us because...
No, I don't think so.
Because, you know, I'm not, you know, I sit on this board and what my goal is, as much as possible, is to find a way to say yes to the applicants who come before us. That's what my goal is. You know, sometimes I just can't say yes. But my goal is to find a way to say yes that protects the city and gives the applicant as much latitude as we can in putting in a stellar project, which what, is what you guys are going to do if you get the approvals, right?
So Liz, do you have a comment?
So I didn't know if you wanted to vote on the motion first. Mine is...
Well, I want to...
My, I would also like personally, a site visit. To me, the issue of topography and how this interconnects with the plan is really important. A steep slope in 30 feet is really going to impact what my thoughts are when I get your recommendations about the Vernal Pool, right? So I need to have that mental picture. So if I can have that as well, I can make a better informed decision on your recommendations.
Charlie, you had something you wanted to do?
I just, and I keep thinking back to my mind about the 30 feet, you know, with the, with the, the houses are. And I know you said there are people that look at this to make sure. You said you've got covenants and all that stuff. But I'd like to really see something hard there that is going to, whether it's rules or signs or electric fence or whatever, to, to protect that area from, from people encroaching on it, whether it's to take a shortcut across the area that will do damage to...
Let's try barbed wire.
And we can have that too, whatever. I just would like that. That's all.
In most other locations that we've dealt with, sidewalk waivers, we've asked that the applicant put that money into a fund that can be used somewhere else on the property or in some other city location. Do I give you enough time?
So that would be a decision for the, for the planning board. If you want to approve the waiver and they just wouldn't put the sidewalks in or any funds, or you deny the waiver and they have to install the sidewalks, or you can give them the option of putting funds aside into our sidewalk.
I think what you said is pretty cut and dry if we...
So it's up to us then?
Yeah, it's just pretty cut and dry. If you approve a sidewalk, that's, they have to put it in. If we did, you know, they could, they could have an option. If we went with them and they, we say the option is putting in, we'll give you the waiver, but in fact, you have to put money into office.
It's the opposite.
Right. That's his option at that point in time. Yes.
So our continuation though is to get a recommendation...
Yes.
That it's okay to not have a sidewalk here or, or something to that effect.
Can I?
And that's why I don't even want to get into that kind of a decision right now because let's just get a recommendation continued.
But I think what she said is cut and dry. I mean, she might recommend something. Yes, Charlie.
But is it, I thought that was just on city streets. That's also in developments?
Well, you know, something that, you know, I agree with you. I mean, I think it's, we're overreached sometimes and, you know, and I hear you. But I'm going with what we've done in the past in other areas. And I agree with you. I mean, I don't think that, you know, it should be, it should be the developer's option. We do it on city street because we're trying to connect one neighborhood to the other.
Right. Which makes sense.
But on the other side of it too, I mean, if that comes forward to us, I would think by the way we're talking is we'll grant them the waiver and be done with it.
Let's not debate the waiver tonight.
I just had a point of, point of information.
Okay.
Well, Karen Morris said it was on two, two street fronts.
I call a question.
Yes.
Okay. So any other, other input? Yes.
I just want to explain to the board that normally, when you guys get a presentation and have a public hearing, you do have recommendations from us. And normally that's because we've gone through all of the TRC before you have a public hearing. Things kind of went out of order with this project and I think that's why there's a bit of a struggle. You opened the public hearing in order to grant some CUPs so they could go for the variance. So, I mean, this is a, this is a very big project with a lot going on. We're hoping, you know, we're going to have meetings. We're hoping to have recommendations for July. But just to, to understand that, you know, the struggle is, is probably a little bit more than you normally would because normally we would have a nice recommendation package for it.
But I think what we're really addressing overall, we're addressing setbacks as a general rule here. And we're addressing why do we have them and why do we have them as we have them dimensioned? Whether it be a 50-foot setback, that kind of stuff, or 100-foot for the Vernal Pool. So the, the thought becomes, what is the logic behind that? What's the rationale behind it? And I think we're talking to a group here that, that wants to understand so that you can make the best decisions here. So the point being is that you should be saying, or someone should be saying to us, there's a board, this came about because someone picked that number. Well, that's fine. If that's what it boils down to, that doesn't mean there's any backup to it. And we can accept that. And maybe we move forward from that point on. But just because there's a number out there, in my opinion, doesn't mean we're locked into it. The number is someone came up with, I mean, I can, time and time again, we've gone from, you know, low shoreline protection and add another thing to that, another thing to that. So that's what I don't understand, why we evolve these distances when the state has done things in the past that we should rely on and say, well, they say a 50-foot shoreline or 150, whatever it may be. And they've done some scientific understanding on that. But we evolve these things to another level. And I think this is where we have issues here. Yeah.
Well, I think that's the whole purpose of why we have hearings and why there are conditions. So I don't want to debate that. And I don't want to debate a rule of thumb, which this might be.
Right, right.
Let's just go ahead and continue this. You've got a motion. I'd second that.
I call a question. I can do that.
What's the motion again?
To continue it with the conditions that we had.
All right, okay. Seconded it?
Second.
All in favor?
To July 11.
All right, all in favor, passes. Okay. So we're going to continue it on. I know you guys wanted some resolution, but you know...
I only want resolution.
Well, hopefully we got some resolution, but I mean, we have resolutions.
You're getting there, Pat. I just have a comment.
And then there's a lot of symbolism here. You understand that and what, what's going on and...
I appreciate it very much. It was a very good discussion.
I have a comment for Dean and Brandy. And that is this. I'm, I'm not sure I heard you right, but if you didn't want to do a hearing tonight, I didn't understand that because...
Oh, no, 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 no. You guys opened the public hearing months ago.
Because I rely on, I rely on the planning department first and foremost in terms of your recommendations, in terms of...
You guys opened the public hearing months ago, so it's continued and the applicant requested to do presentations. So that's the cycle that we are...
It's information.
Yep. Yeah. And I mean, at this point, at this point, it is helpful to have the dialogue so that we can work with them behind the scenes and come up with...
And while long, I think that's, you've got some good info, right?
Please, please remember that several months ago, when they, when we knew they had to have the variance, we asked you not to accept and let them go to the zoning board first and then we would deal with it. And, and in your infinite wisdom, which...
Oh, that sounds a little sarcastic.
I love it when you lie to me like that.
Chose to, to, to do a parallel path and that's, that's where we are.
Well, we'd probably be in the same place anyway, but, you know.
I don't think so. I think we'd be in a...
I can live with my mistakes.
I think we'd be at a different point, right? We wouldn't have had this type, this type of discussion, to be honest with you. Okay, let's move on. The next item on this.
No, I'm sorry.
You ready to move on?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, okay.
Shut up.
Okay, election of offices. So we have nominations for Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary. So do we have a motion on that?
I didn't know the election of officers was up to...
Was that, were we here last meeting?
Yeah. Just checking.
We have one person nominated for each position.
Yes, we had nominations.
Oh, that's right. We made you the nomination.
Can I make a motion to accept the nominations?
No, second them.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay.
I oppose. I guess unanimously it passes.
Thank you.
So who won?
People nominated.
To BD, TBD, right? Okay, I think we've, the minutes for, a couple of things going on administratively. We need a liaison to the Lakes Region Planning Commission. We need a liaison to the Conservation Commission. And, and then the city council will update us in a minute. So do we have any volunteers or anybody that wants to take that on? I guess this will be coming up until we get somebody that signs up for it.
So in the meantime, if you guys have questions about what that means and what kind of commitment that is...
I think the Chair or the Vice Chair should be the liaison to the Lakes Region...
Oh, I've already done time with that. I was, I was, I was a commissioner for five, six years.
No, I think...
You did the conservation.
I think you're a voting member.
And I did the conservation. I did the conservation for about four years. So I don't know what to tell you. Maybe, you know, that would be good to understand setbacks and stuff like that. Do you want to step up, counsel? Like you got nothing else to do, I bet, huh? Okay. But anybody wants to...
Do we need, how do we get a liaison to the Lakes Region Planning Commission?
You, you...
I think you as a board have to appoint them. Is that right?
We have to appoint someone.
You nominate and the city council appoints them. But we nominate, we have, we have one, we have, at the moment, we have one person on the Lakes Region Planning Commission.
Oh, who's that?
We are entitled to have three.
Well, does Warren, is Warren still participate on that? So we have two? We have two. We have Warren's position and we have Ham's position.
We have Dean Anson as a commissioner at this moment.
No, I understand that. So we have Warren, was that on there? And then we had Ham. So we had, we have two people that would be thought of.
So we have two openings.
Two openings, yes.
How often does that meet? When does it meet?
I...
I think it's like six meetings a year?
Yeah, I don't...
Who wants to volunteer for that?
Yeah, it says six meetings, six times a year, sorry.
Do you know when they meet?
Do not.
Does anybody know when they meet? Does anybody know when they meet?
No, I don't know exactly.
Maybe we can get that information.
Have a nice dinner on Christmas time.
Charlie, do they meet evenings during the day?
Sometimes they meet during the day, sometimes they pull together during the day, and sometimes in the evening.
And the main purpose of this group is?
Well, to discuss the Lake Region area, and what the plan is on...
That's perfect.
Improving it and what they're working on, and whether it be...
Bring input from this planning board to them.
Right, you're supposed to be representing the city and directing them what to do. I mean, they are a commission that supports everybody. I mean, I know some people view it the other way around, but if you let them, they will be the other way around, but, you know, our idea is to drive what they're doing.
And right now...
To rights on the master plan.
I was saying, just about to say that, they're involved with the master planning committee.
Would you consider it double duty to be on both?
No.
No. You're signing up for it, are you?
Let us find out when they meet and nominate, that kind of thing.
And you also...
No, I nominate him.
I nominate him, okay.
You might nominate Mike?
Wait a minute, why don't you find out when they meet, so that we can make a decision about who wants to do this?
Well, we got a...
Because I think either one of you would be...
We got a hot one here, he wants to do it, let him do it. Why we stall in the process?
What the requirements are.
Why we stall in the process? I mean, if he wants to do it, let him do it. We have to open, so if you want to do it, totally.
Okay, if he could do the same for the Conservation Commission?
I know, that's, that's our question, maybe you need that before your consideration. But Michael seemed like he signed up, so...
No, nobody signed up. We're getting more information.
We lost them, we had them, but we lost them to the Lake Region.
For the two commissions.
Planning Commission and the Conservation Commission.
And the Conservation.
How many members do we get on the Conservation Commission?
One, non-voting.
Huh?
One.
Non-voting?
Non-voting.
Who wants to do that?
That's what I'm trying to tell you.
Well, it's so that you can come prepared to the meeting, understanding the Conservation Commission's recommendation.
So if I tell the Conservation Commission that they're doing it all wrong, it doesn't matter, right?
No, because you got no vote down there.
No vote, but you can tell.
Wait a minute, so there's two openings, but only one person votes?
And you can be like, I have already attended all the meetings, and clearly, they don't know what they're talking about, so there you go, it is a vote.
There are two openings, but only one member votes?
No.
No, 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 there's two openings for the Lake Region Planning Commission.
Okay.
One opening for the Conservation Commission. Both, go and vote, vote, or whatever, they, whatever they have to do.
The, the Lake Region Planning Commission, we would, the members from here, whoever goes there, would be able to vote or not.
Yes.
Yes.
But not the other one, the other one...
The Conservation Commission, you can go, you can listen, you can talk, but you can't vote.
You can grunt, you can groan, but that's as far as it goes.
That might be just far enough.
Did I categorize that correctly?
I think you captured the moment.
Very well done.
Okay.
Okay.
So whatever you wish you want to do, if you want to get on it, Lake Region Planning Commission, please let Dean know, and then we'll...
We'll figure that out next meeting.
We'll figure it out.
They'll have more information, and they can make a decision.
And then we need city council...
Why don't you want to be on any of these committees? Oh, you're already on the master plan.
We need a city council input.
There's nothing to report.
Nothing to report. You said it all earlier today.
Excellent. The, the only thing to report is, you already know, that the master plan committee comprised of members of the planning board, members of the public, and members of the council had its first meeting, and we're going to have another one July 14th, and everybody's going to write...
June 14th.
June 14th.
June 14th.
We had a town now, now you'll be here. Now you'll be here, unfortunately.
Yeah, now I don't have an excuse for missing it.
So we, we got our introduction meeting, and so we're...
Yeah, it's good.
I move we accept the minutes for a second.
Liz is going to give us, Michael, I don't know if you want to copy this, I don't know if you do, David, she has a resemblance of a, of a master plan, which would give us the comprehensive sections and par, you know, all that stuff, and you could thumb through it just to get a scope of what it's all about, if you need it.[1706.87]